I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 at 7:15 PM. Welcome to everyone here and on Zoom for tonight's hearing. The Planning Board members will review four zoning articles printed in the warrant for town meeting. I'll now introduce the members of the Planning Board who are here tonight. Rob Almeida, Andrew Boardman, Sue Felshen, Mark Giddings, and myself. And I will ask for everyone to say yes for the roll call, since Abby's not here.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. In addition, Elizabeth Hughes, our town planner, is here to assist us throughout the meeting. And as you can see, that's the only reason we got started tonight. So thank you, Elizabeth. I move that we open the public hearing for the review of Articles 34, 35, 36, and 37 from the 2024 Town Meeting Warrant. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll take the role, Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Sue Felshen.
Yes.
Mark Giddings.
Yes.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. The first zoning article tonight will be the Article 34, the MBTA Communities' Multifamily Housing Overlay District. I'd like to just talk about people's approaches to these hearings. And I really believe that the purpose of this meeting tonight is to generate feedback with regard to the articles and receive public comment on the clarity of our presentations. We're not planning to debate on this article or have discourse with regard to the pros and cons of any specific items. That obviously will fall to town meeting that will make the decisions on these articles. So if we can go to slide number one. And next to slide number two. "In 2020, the state passed the MBTA Communities' Multifamily Housing Act to help solve a regional housing shortage. New local zoning to reduce constraints on construction of multifamily homes is required across towns and cities in eastern Massachusetts. This presentation will review the compliance requirements for Concord, the rationale for transit-oriented multifamily housing, community guidance and recommendations, and the resulting proposed zoning and mapping as detailed in Article 34. This is multifamily housing in Concord. Did you know that our present zoning code does not allow multifamily homes to be built in Concord today? The existing homes that we just looked at are either a result of past 40B permits that bypassed our zoning requirements, are non-conforming homes that were built prior to our current regulations, or are limited to two-family structures in the residency zoning district, which requires special permit reviews by the Planning Board. The basic requirements of the law are to add new zoning to at least 50 acres in town. At least one-half of those 50 acres must be located within a half-mile radius of a commuter rail station, and on average must have a density of 15 units per acre or more, must have no age restrictions imposed by the town, and should be suitable for families with children. Finally, those 50 acres based on density and area could, in theory, contain at least 1,094 multifamily units. There is no requirement that private property owners develop or redevelop any of the properties in the district. They could continue to enjoy the prior zoning as it exists. The new zoning is an overlay and is by right. Homes can be built with conditions required by the Planning Board, but building cannot be denied. The benefits to Concord, in compliance with the law, provides Concord with access to important state funding programs for infrastructure and sustainability. In addition, other funds could be used by town departments wishing to conduct studies that require the expertise of outside consultants, and those would continue. It's important to note what is not required by the law. The law does not require housing to be built, only to be zoned for. It does not require communities to pay upfront for infrastructure to anticipate housing development, and does not override certain key land protection statutes for protection for wetlands or historic preservation. In addition, neither the 40B projects under discussion nor closure of MCI Concord are part of or related to the MBTA law. And finally, improvements to the MBTA itself are not included. Concord is on record in its support of transit-oriented multifamily housing. Goals to this effect are highlighted in both the recent Housing Production Plan and the Town's Long Range Plan. Housing with greater density located near transit can provide options for people to afford living in Concord, continue the Concord lifestyle as a convenient and attractive place to live, work, and play, can help us meet environmental needs and sustainability goals, supports pedestrians and cyclists rather than reliance on automobiles, provides more accessible customers to retailers and services in our town centers, and can improve public health outcomes. The Select Board designated the Planning Board to provide compliant zoning. Over this time, town staff, committees, and residents have generously spent their time and energy to identify community preferences for the location and desired characteristics of the overlay district. This is a partial list of the community events, committee meetings, resident connection hours, and CCTV programming where zoning and maps have been reviewed. A notify me email opt-in was available to everyone with an interest in receiving notices of these events, and a medallion on the town's homepage easily clicks through to a dedicated page for information and meeting recordings. Here's a small photo sampling highlighting the community meetings, location pinning exercises, surveys, planning board meetings, and other outreach events. Thanks again to all, and some of you are in the room tonight and on the Zoom. Thanks again to all who are part of this process. These, on the next slide, are the community guiding principles gathered from this input. Locate as much of the district as possible within one-half mile of the commuter rail stations. Maintain building heights and characteristics of multifamily homes consistent with Concord's current housing. Avoid loading new housing onto well-developed neighborhoods and address areas with the potential for new housing areas or areas where there is existing multifamily housing. Maintain as much local control as possible. Balance the housing capacity evenly between Concord Center and West Concord. And finally, include affordable housing as allowed. This is the resulting map and reflects community guidance and location selection. Let's briefly review each of the five sub-districts. Subdistrict 1 is in and near Concord Center and includes properties on Kaiser Road and Lowell Road and Main Street, such as the Millbrook Tarry, Concord Market and Walgreens, and the offices at 100 Main Street and Milldam Square condominiums. Subdistrict 2, just outside the half-mile radius from Concord Center, includes Concord lumber, Concord oil, and three single-family residential lots. Subdistrict 3, also in Concord Center, includes commercial properties such as a gas station and a coffee shop, and also existing multifamily housing, the Thoreau Gardens apartment, and several single-family homes on Sudbury Road and Thoreau, all very near to the commuter rail station. The fourth sub-district, Baker Avenue area, is in West Concord and was very high on the list of potential areas for multifamily housing cited in the 2023-2028 Housing Production Plan. It includes three lots. 6X Winthrop Street, known as Junction Village, has long been envisioned as a site for affordable housing. 68 Commonwealth Avenue holds the Concord Park assisted living building, and 292 Baker and 294 Baker Avenue are locations developers have selected for the Novo 40B project currently under discussion with the ZBA. Finally, Subdistrict 5 is along Elm Street near Route 2 and the Rotary, and includes five lots: the former Asian gourmet restaurant now transitioning to a Dunkin', the location for paparazzi, which is now closed but may be converted into a single location for restaurants and a bank, the current shelter or Best Western building, and as well as two small office buildings. In terms of calculating compliance, these districts, all five, meet the requirement that there be a five-acre minimum for non-contiguous areas to be included in the overlay district. Town committees and residents preferred that new zoning should mirror the existing zoning of those districts. Elizabeth, if we could move along. Here we show the inputs for minimum lot size, building height, lot coverage, open space requirements, setbacks, the minimum number of feet for front, side, and rear to any adjoining properties or streets, required number of parking spaces per unit of housing, and density requirements in units per acre. Just to clarify before I get the question, the choice of three stories of height rather than the 35-foot as a standard in Concord resulted from limitations of the state's compliance model. Input choices were not available by feet, only by number of stories. Using the MBTA Communities' compliance model to test each district's location, size, and zoning parameters found that this current configuration of these five districts and their associated zoning parameters will provide Concord with just enough land area units and density to be in compliance with the requirements of the guidelines. Transit-oriented multifamily housing reflects the goals of both the Concord Housing Production Plan and the Town's Long Range Plan envisioned Concord 2030. The zoning and mapping described in Article 34 both reflect community preferences and meet the parameters required by the state's compliance model. Thank all of you for sitting through this presentation, and we would now be happy to take your questions and comments. If you could identify yourself and address and proceed with your questions, I'll take them first from the room. I can't, but I don't know if the microphone is on. Would you like to approach the table and use one of the microphones here? Or try the podium?
Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue and Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. May I face the... Where is the camera?
Good question.
All right. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks very much. First, I want to say that, as you may have read in our joint letter to the editor of the Concord Bridge, all four boards in Concord with housing in their names support Article 34. And we're all here tonight to speak in favor of it. In fact, at the Concord Housing Roundtable meeting last summer, we heard the update of the Planning Board of what your top priority was for the coming year, and we wanted to support that. And I asked for a show of hands to see who would agree to come to all the Planning Board meetings where MBTA Communities was on the agenda, and we've been, I think, pretty faithful in coming along. So we commend the Planning Board for its thoughtful, year-long public engagement process for expanding housing opportunities by bringing Concord into compliance with the state's MBTA community zoning law. Article 34 identifies 84 acres spread across five sub-districts where multifamily would be allowed as a use by right, subject to Planning Board Site Plan Review. We're also pleased that for projects of 10 or more units, the bylaw would require a percentage of those to be affordable at 80% of area median income. I think the stakes are high for Concord as the town seeks to pursue a partnership with the state over the future use of MCI Concord. Senator Barrett noted at the League of Women Voters event recently, "Noncompliance with MBTA community zoning would be a bad idea." And we don't want to become another town of Milton where the state is not only withholding funds but is actually taking action against us. Instead, Concord and Lexington are looking to welcome the world to here next year for the 250th anniversary of April 19, 1775. Lexington has already passed MBTA community zoning, and Concord needs to be on the right side of history as well. It's the law, and it's the right thing to do, and we urge your committee to favorably report it out to town meeting and for the voters to approve Article 34. And you've done a marvelous job bringing it this far. Let's bring it all the way together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the room now that... Yes. And we welcome all comments, but definitely would look for any sharp comments that people have on the presentation, how it could be improved, or areas where you had any uncertainties.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rich Feely, 347 Lexington Road, President of the Concord Housing Foundation. This is an action that, you know, the state's making us do it, but I'm glad we're doing it because I think, you know, people who traditionally moved into town as skilled trades and young professionals can no longer afford Concord because of the price of land and the price of construction. And if we want them here, this is the only way they're going to be able to get here with multifamily housing. I do recommend a couple of changes. One, your first slide was great, but if one is not in fact familiar with your whole presentation, you don't have time to say, "Oh, yeah, that... Oh, I know that building. I know that building. Oh, that's 15..." You know, Concord Green is 15 units per acre? I think it's important to bring that in back at the end and say, "Folks, we're not asking you to live with anything you don't live with anymore already." So I think that's important. I think it might also be important to point out that there is a minimum of 10% affordability required, that the town has drafted the ordinance so that if we... The economic study that you have, which shows that even 20% affordability is feasible, that we would move to that as long as the state approves it. And I think that's important. So those are the two suggestions I would have technically. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. And now it looks like the microphone in the room is working.
It works. Hi, my name is Mary Hartman. I live at 16 Concord Green, Unit 6. I'm a member of the Select Board and speaking for myself. I particularly liked the slide where you showed all the public input. So it looked like a calendar, so that for me as a keeper to really show all of the ways that you got input from the community. But I do have a question. If I look at the number of gross acres that are added up in the five districts in the overlay, I think it comes out to like 80 acres, close to that, right? And out of those 80 acres, I think you pointed out that many of those really won't be in play. There won't be multifamily housing put on these acres because there's already housing there, or there's something in the pipeline already, like the paparazzi or at the Novo. So out of those 80 acres, how many of those realistically could have incremental housing because of the MBTA community? And I suspect it's a lot less than... A lot less than 80.
I think it is both a question not only of capacity but also time.
Right. And time. But even... Right. Right. But even the capacity, I think, would bring that way down because I think a lot of what's in that 80 acres is already, again, won't be changed if this legislation passes at town meeting. That's my only point. You can take it or leave it.
Yeah. I think that's a good point. I don't think we've tried to calculate that number.
Right.
And it's a good question, though.
It's a suggestion.
Yeah. Thank you, Mary.
Pat Nelson, 52 Cottage Lane. I think this is a really clear and easy-to-understand presentation. I appreciate the work that you've put into it. And I don't know if the town meeting or this presentation is the place to do it, but I suspect that there will be a lot of questions about compliance and what that means. And it might be helpful to have just a moment or so more that this is being required by the state and just to clarify that, to kind of get ahead of that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
You had a list of all of the things that we would lose, and we decided not to put that in there.
Well, I can't... If we go... If you want to wait, I can respond. I've got a lot of backup slides.
Right. We had a list of all of the things we would lose, and we thought it was... Step back. You can't hear me?
Number 41. Actually, number 42. If you want to see some of the other issues. Compliance is two-pronged. One is what could we lose in terms of... Yes, please. Some of the other grants that could be lost, we can show. And the other question is what legal actions the state might take. And I don't really want to speculate on that. I think we're all watching one of those situations play out, and I don't think we, at this point, can really comment or draw any conclusions other than it would be best to avoid that if we can be satisfied with, you know, the solution. Yes.
Thank you very much. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. I have a couple of questions. The first is that... Excuse me. Cold. Just getting over COVID, so a little groggy. If we were... If I were a developer and I were to come to you and say, "All right, this is a plot I'd like to develop. Let's take a somewhat neutral thought. Let's say that behind where the Best Western is right now, I can see sufficient acreage to build something that would be compliant with the rules and all sorts of other good incentives for doing so. What role does the Planning Board take at that moment in terms of being able to put constraints on or help guide a developer? And could you help people understand the difference between what role the Planning Board would take if a developer were to approach you? But secondly, what role the ZBA plays in relationship to that, just so that people understand the process? Thank you.
That's a good question. I think if we go to slide 29, so the guidance that's given for the regulation of the Act is that towns can develop site plan review, and that site plan review can regulate a number of issues, particularly with regard to safety issues such as access and circulation of vehicles, as well as architectural design of the buildings and screening for adjacent properties. However, site plan review, unlike special permits, can unreasonably delay the development of a project, and it cannot make it infeasible for development, that is, put so much cost on top of the project that it's not economically feasible, and you cannot outright deny it. So it's not the same as a special permit. Site plan review, however, does give the community in the Planning Board's hands a certain degree of control. In terms of the zoning board of appeals, there are no waivers available under this Act. So I don't know if...
Elizabeth would agree, but there would be...
The zoning... They could not apply to the zoning board for a waiver of requirements.
For an appeal to anything we might ask in terms of constraints or direction. Secondly, if the developer were, in fact, to begin a construction site that we felt was going to put tremendous pressure on the neighborhood in terms of traffic and traffic controls, how do we deal with vehicular access and circulation on the site if we can anticipate that crowding is going to occur and that congestion will be the result? And I wonder, in other words, I think these are very vague. Vehicular access and circulation on the site doesn't impact what the impact on traffic, you know, to an area. And so I just wonder, that doesn't seem to be on the list at all. So we have no control over that either, right?
In terms of... Okay. So one of the purposes of the Act that you have to remember is actually to support transit. So I think part of the rationale is to reduce congestion, reduce reliance on, you know, being an auto-centric structure of the town. So that sort of fly... You're right. It flies in the face of saying we have to do more traffic studies because we... So we want more density, and we want more locations that people do not have to rely on the automobile. So that is... As I get... And you have to say, "Well, what if this doesn't work?"
That's all remarkably admirable, and I think the intention of all of this is wonderfully clear. I just think you're going to get some questions about that. And so I think perhaps in some sort of anticipation, it would be a good thing to have that clarified while you're doing your presenting. Thank you.
Okay. I think Elizabeth would like to weigh in on...
Thank you. Elizabeth Hughes, Concord Town Planner. A perfect example would be the redevelopment of Paparazzi. That was only a site plan review through the Planning Board. They did not request any waivers or relief in the zoning bylaw that would require a special permit from the Board of Appeals. As part of that redevelopment, they were required to... And as part of that site plan application, they were required to provide engineering drawings, a complete traffic and safety plan. And as part of that project, the Planning Board had a outside peer review, review everything, and recommendations are made for off-site improvements to mitigate the impacts of the... to mitigate the impacts of that project. So that is, um, that is a process through site plan review that the planning board, um, does have and has used. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. That's a great example.
Hi, I'm Terry Ackerman. I'm on the select board, but just speaking for myself. Uh, I think the presentation is excellent. It's very organized. It's great that you have the backup slides and, um, I really like your approach of kind of taking the high road. And, um, yes, you might get questions on, uh, what if we don't pass this? Will the state be punitive, blah, blah, blah? But I like having them only in the backup slides. I don't think you should emphasize upfront all these negative things because hopefully we'll never go there anyway. So it's great to have them in the backup slides. I think your approach is really good the way you have it.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any questions, uh, on Zoom? Yeah. Oh, I, I was going to take a couple on Zoom.
Oh, okay, sure.
And, and then we'll get back to you. Thank you. Matt Johnson?
Hi, Matt Johnson, twenty-one Winthrop Street in Concord. Uh, I have one comment on the presentation and a few questions. So the one comment was you mentioned that multi-unit housing was not generally allowed in our zoning, but, um, actually you overlooked, I think, the PRD bylaw. So, you know, planned residential developments can have multi-units in them. Second, though, about the questions. So when I look at that small district on Thorough Street, uh, with the, the, the only one that has, is presently, you know, residency with individual housing units on it. I don't see anything in here that would override the floor area ratio for those. So while the setbacks have been adjusted, the floor area ratio might actually prevent the development of units that are within that level of density. The second thing there is how are fractional units calculated? You know, if I look at those lots, a prototypical, uh, ten thousand square foot residency lot would be, you know, three point seven five units. So is that four units? Is it at three units?
Those are good questions. I.
Okay, you don't have an answer.
I don't know that I have an absolute answer to, um, either of those, but we will find out.
All right. And then, you know, if it's not an exactly ten thousand square foot lot, which none of these are, you know, how do you calculate that?
Right.
All right, then, um, the, uh, MCI Concord site, clearly since, uh, this whole thing was written, that site, you know, has been identified as a potential, uh, location for future housing, mixed use. And it seems ideal, in fact, much better suited than the, uh, plot along Elm Street, uh, for inclusion because much of it would be within the half-mile radius. Um, and it's adjacent to one of the other parcels that you've already identified. So, yeah, I don't know if the moderator would allow it, but, you know, the, the swapping or extending, uh, to include that district or that area would be, it seems like, very beneficial, uh, to the, the, you know, the statistics on this bylaw, that we'd have more acreage, we'd have, or, or perhaps more acreage that's within the, the half-mile, um, you know, and it would all be adjacent. Uh, so it, it just seems like either a, you know, special town meeting within town meeting or, uh, it may be an amendment, uh, if the moderator would allow it, uh, could, uh, maybe, you know, improve the set of districts that are being enabled.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, uh, at this point, pretty speculative in terms of where we are with MCI Concord, um, as a, both as a community in terms of reaching, uh, consensus of what could be put where on those sites. And then, um, somewhat speculative to, you know, because we cannot include, um, but right now, the prison is excluded from consideration. And whether by April it would be able to be included, um, it's still, I believe, would be excluded.
How is that from a zoning perspective? It's zoned industrial, right? I mean, as you pointed out in your presentation, it doesn't have to produce.
It's not, it's not the zoning, it's the guidance in the MBTA Communities.
How is it state property?
Because, because any, um.
State property cannot be included in an MBTA zone?
A municipal, state, or federal property cannot be included.
Okay, then that answers the question because it, it will still be a municipal property by town meeting.
I would believe so, but that doesn't mean that it won't be a, a wonderful opportunity for multifamily housing at some point, is not either or, you know. We have an embarrassment of riches coming down the road, I think, with multifamily housing. And this is just the start. We have that, that the two forty B projects in MCI Concord will likely have some housing or thoughts about it. So I, I don't know that it, um, that you won't have much to look forward to, but it won't be able to fall within the purview of the MBTA Communities Act.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Elizabeth would like to comment here.
Um, so I would also like to add, um, purely from a zoning act perspective and, um, what is, um, allowed to happen to a zoning bylaw amendment. Um, you can take forward a zoning bylaw amendment to town meeting and an amendment on the floor of town meeting to, um, reduce the scope of a bylaw amendment can happen. Uh, an amendment to expand the scope, um, is not something that, uh, can happen. So, um, town meeting would not be able to add properties to the overlay district as an amendment to the floor of town meeting because the town has not had the opportunity to, um, weigh in on that, discuss that, have it be part of the public hearing or part of the warrant. And, and, but the town.
That's why I asked whether the moderator would, yeah, I mean, I thought maybe an exchange would work, but.
It's also worth noting that if lots are substituted and some are within the zone, some are out of the zone, it will change the compliance model, so it may no longer be a compliance solution. Um, so swapping things on the fly, even if they're the same, they are different. So it would be a real concern.
Eric Moore has a question.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. My name's Eric Moore. I'm at forty-five Francis Street. Um, so I have two small questions and then a, a, a suggestion for the presentation. Uh, the two small questions are, um, in terms of the property owners whose, uh, who, whose properties are now going to be affected by this new overlay, um, can you point to, uh, any objections or, or any, any agreement with, from the property owners? I mean, how, how are the property owners basically feeling about this process that's affecting them? Uh, the, the second small question is it's, it's hard to imagine a thousand units over these five different, uh, uh, areas. And, um, I, I'm just curious as to, to, to hear if, if in the planning process we actually are confident that we can fit, you know, a thousand units in, in three stories, so to speak, over those areas. Uh, my suggestion for the presentation is just a, a single, simple slide as a summary, which I think would have these four points. One is that the state, uh, did something which we have to respond to in effect. Uh, second, that we had a process, an explicit process with a lot of participation. Uh, three, that, uh, the design basically really avoids making changes to well-established neighborhoods. If you, if you look at where the areas are, they're relatively undeveloped, uh, uh, relatively speaking. And four, the, the net changes that it's much easier and faster to build up to three stories, still subject to normal zoning requirements. Uh, uh, so for me, those four points kind of simplify everything and, and, uh, it'd be nice to have a summary slide of some kind like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, very good, uh, suggestions. To date, we have had, um, some positive feedback from property owners. Um, I, I received that from, uh, one of the, um, community, uh, events. But, uh, otherwise it's, it's been rather quiet. And we did send out to every property owner notification that they would be included in this process. So, um, uh.
And, and, and also it's, it's a development option. It's not a requirement to, to add density to existing properties. So if someone has a house that they like, there's no requirement that they tear it down and put up a three-story building.
Oh, right. And they can, they can continue to exist. Um, they, they can sell the property. They can do whatever they normally would do under the existing, um, or the, the his, you know, the historic zoning that they've had. Um, this just gives them a, an additional option. So generally, an option has some value. So I would expect, um, if property owners thought about it, um, they might be, um, pleased that their property is included. But that's just the economist's way of viewing things. Okay. Thank you. Um, so, um, we had a question in the room we were going to go back to. Do. You're all set? And, um, oh, Tanya Galis?
Hi, Tanya Galis, sixty-two Prescott Road. I, uh, my question was, uh, whether it could be made clearer which of these areas are near wetlands or in floodplain zones in the presentation? Um, I know wet, wetlands are excluded, but it may be a concern in some places, like the low road sections perhaps, or any others that I might not know about?
Yes, I'm gonna, um, go on and, um, just see that, um, I guess maybe slide twenty-five talks a little bit about the excluded land. And I, I don't have this as part of the presentation, but all rivers, streams, lakes, ponds, and other surface water bodies, all wetlands, resource areas with buffer zones around the wetlands, um, any kind of protected open space or recreational land, um, and, uh, privately owned land protecting private or public water supplies. And also any sensitive lands are excluded land and cannot be, um, in any of, uh, the overlay zone. So there is quite a bit of protection of, uh, of wetlands.
But I guess floodplains aren't mentioned per se is what I'm.
Um, yes, in, under, uh, sensitive land, uh, they are, anything that is prone to flooding. Um, I think there it's more, they don't want to build on land that's prone to flooding.
Thank you.
That would disturb the land. Um, uh, so that is excluded as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, did you also want to?
So I will also add, um, that the proposed zoning does not, um, override what's already in the zoning bylaw dealing with the floodplain conservancy district and, uh, the requirements within that district. It also does not override the town's wetland bylaw, which is more restrictive than the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, so all of those, um, elements are still in play for any proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes, could you, um, move to the microphone or, um, thank you so much. Uh, we have a question in the room.
Um, hello, my name is Suzanne Foley and I live at two thirty-five Sudbury Road. And I'm just thinking about the numbers that I saw and I'm trying to understand them. So in most sections of town, you're requiring twenty thousand square feet. What in the Thoreau Sudbury area, it's only ten thousand square feet. So does that mean we're going to have half the housing as everybody else? We're going to have the same number of housing, but just more densely developed, which is what nobody really wanted in our area. It's not, I mean, I, I know we're going to have the affordable housing. I want to support that. I want to be part of the MBTA community and all of that positive things that go with it. But I'm trying to understand why there's half the amount of land allotted in the Thoreau Sudbury areas. Why was that exception made? Where did it come from?
Did, did you want to?
Thank you, Elizabeth Hughes, Town Planner. Um, the Thoreau Sudbury area, other than, um, the gas station and Starbucks, um, those other lots are in the residency zone district. And the minimum lot size is currently ten thousand square feet. Um, so the square footage, uh, that's in the proposed MBTA Communities, um, for, uh, that area was ten thousand square feet. Um, for other areas, the air, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet.
So clarify.
Does that mean we're going to have less housing?
No, the lot size is half the size. And on a lot that's half the size, you can build half as much housing. So if you have two lots of the ten thousand feet, that's just as much housing as you could build on one lot of twenty thousand feet. It's only about the minimum lot size, not the density of housing. So how, so just explain to me, because I really don't get it and I'm sorry. How does this affect the density of what's going to happen on Sudbury Road and, and the Thoreau area? It'll be more dense than the other areas? No. It won't? Okay, good. No, it'll be the same density. It's just that you can't put any, if you had a ten thousand square foot lot in one of the other districts, you wouldn't be allowed to do anything at all because the lot would be too small. You would have to buy up extra land to make the lot size be large enough to be allowed to do anything at all. So these lots at ten thousand square feet are large enough to build on, is what you're saying? And the whole area is like that? So it's in compliance with the whole neighborhood? Isn't that what Elizabeth said? Or not? I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Um, so the, the current zoning for that area, uh, in the residency zone district, the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet. Um, so the proposed MBTA community zoning is based on what the current zoning bylaw requires. And, and how the state has established these, uh, the compliance model, it, it just goes through the zoning. All it looks at is the square footage of the lot, three stories, the setbacks, and two parking spaces per dwelling unit. Um, it does not take into consideration, um, and this would be something, should somebody choose to build something, um, you might want to have a three-family. Um, you are going to have to provide six parking spaces. You're going to have to provide a driveway. You're going to have to provide other areas. So a, a smaller lot, um, may not, the characteristics of that lot and the constraints of that lot, it, it may not be possible to even, to build a three-family. Um, so the, the zoning sets out the rules. Um, but it is actually, if somebody comes forward and proposes something, you, you have all these other requirements that you have to meet to be able to build a three-family. And, and it may not, it, it may not work. Um, so the, it, it's, it's challenging when you talk about zoning. That's why I think it's, um, important, the board and even the state's guidelines say, this isn't a mandate to build because there's so many, so many things go into developing a good project and what the constraints of the site are, um, there are wetlands, floodplain, um, buffer zones, um, but the day-to-day needs for a three-family. You know, you have to have, you know, parking. You have to have a place to put your trash cans. You have to, you know, so there's a lot that goes into the actual development of the site. And that's, um, zoning can't tell you how to make that happen.
However, last spring, there was a proposal to put sixty-five units on Sudbury Road in that area and another thirty over in Thoreau Street. Now you're saying you could even build a three-family home on it? So I'm even more confused, Elizabeth. I'm glad you're trying to explain it, but it isn't making it clearer to me.
So, um, the proposal you're talking about is, um, the board three, wow, I'm already three years now. Um, and the rezoning for the Thoreau Depot. Um, again, um, the, what the com, the explanation I just gave was definitely, um, not made clear three years ago. Um, that same premise applies. Um, the consultant that the town worked with on the Thoreau Depot. um, took certain parameters and put them in a model. Again, that model did not think about where driveways would be located, where trash would be located. So that model um, took the very basic elements of lot size, parking and setbacks and three stories and said, okay, this model could get you this. Highly, you know, highly likely that you would never get to that because when somebody came in to design something, they didn't think about um, how the fire truck was gonna get around the building, um, where the delivery truck was gonna come, where, so um, modeling, modeling can give you an idea, but it um, more than not, uh, it, it doesn't take into site characteristics and daily living.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Thank you for asking the question. If we're gonna see if there are any additional questions from Zoom. Becky, I'm sorry, Betsy?
Hi, I'm Betsy Olson-McKowski and I um, live at seventeen forty-one Wedgewood Common. I just wanted to say that I think this is a really thoughtful um, presentation. And I appreciate how you balance um, the need for zoning changes with the concerns for having things change too rapidly. I feel like it's really, it's incremental. Um, and it's, it's just all around positive. Uh, try and that you took a grit, uh, did a very nice job of taking input from the town. So uh, yeah, I just wanted to express that.
Thank you. That was the goal. I really am happy to hear that. Thanks so much. Um, Kathleen Lang, I believe. Kathleen, can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, I did not mean to raise my hand.
Oh, okay. Well, it's nice you're here with us anyway. Um, I think Matt Johnson though has another question.
Yeah, I just had one more question, which is what about non-conforming lots? So at least one of the lots on Thoreau Street that would be in the district is non-conforming. And of course, we have, you know, special permit requirements for an over fifty percent increase in uh, building, you know, gross floor area. So how would that play? Is it overridden by the override district, overlay district or not?
I, there is nothing that I have seen in the guidance that um, would eliminate non-conforming lots from being.
Well, except for that, are you, supposedly in these districts, you can't deny the building and yet the special permit requirement for the ZBA would potentially deny the building.
So Elizabeth Hughes, Town Planner. So if you have a non-conforming lot, um, let's, we'll, we'll take a lot on Thoreau. Uh, it's nine thousand square feet. It's a legal non-conforming lot. It was created before residency zone district went into effect and a house was built. Um, that lot is a legal non-conforming lot. It can exist today as non-conforming with your single-family dwelling. Um, it does not give you the right to build a three family on a non-conforming lot. The bylaw that's up um, MBTA communities, you have to have ten thousand square feet. You have to meet those setbacks. And um, so it does not override uh, a legal non-conforming lot. Uh, somebody could apply for a special permit to change, alter, extend um, a legal non-conforming lot and, and try and build a two-family or, you know, a three-family. But uh, again, that would be a special permit process, um, not a site plan review.
Thank you for clarifying that, Elizabeth. Yes, in the room?
Sure. Mark Howell in North Side Hill Road, uh, member of the select board, speaking for myself. When you were on slide twenty, uh, you made a comment about uh, the height requirement being restricted to stories in the, in the law. And I know that some of our um, zoning requirements specify height in feet. And I was struck when traveling through Cambridge at the very wide variety of heights that three-story buildings can, can be. And I'm wondering, maybe it's related to what Matt was mentioning about floor area ratio. Is there a way in which the actual height in feet that we have in our current zoning will interact with this in order to make sure that you don't end up with an extraordinarily large three-story structure? It's, it's out of place. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Elizabeth, since she's nodding there, to answer that. Yeah, should.
So the, um, the bylaw has the three-story um, limit and the thirty-five-foot height would be that limit for those three stories. So how height is measured in the zoning bylaw is still how height will be measured in the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. I see no additional questions in the room. Uh, is there anyone on Zoom? And I think we are done with Article thirty-four. Thank you so much uh, for listening through all of that. And let's turn over to Article thirty-five. I believe Andrew is going to.
Yep, I'll be presenting that one. It's a zoning bylaw amendment to section four point two point two point one, two-family in Residence B zoning district. This proposal is a zoning bylaw amendment which seeks to allow two-family dwellings by special permit from the zoning Board of Appeals in the Residence zoning District B. I'll wait one second for that to come up or we can keep talking. If you go to slide two, perfect. Um, in twenty twenty-one, the town meeting passed amendment to allow two-family dwellings by special permit in Residence C zoning district. To date, a total of six special permits have been granted under that amendment. Um, this map shows Residence C District in orange, which currently permits two-family housing by special permit. And the proposal amendment will expand it to the blue area. Um, the envisioned Concord Comprehensive Long Range Plan included exploring zoning alternatives that enable higher density, mixed-use, more walkable and economically diverse neighborhoods, encouraging production of small-scale affordable housing that is sustainable, resilient, and consistent with the town's character. Um, since it began discussing the MBTA Communities Act in June of twenty twenty-three, the planning board has heard from a number of groups and individuals which show broad support for increasing diversity of housing options, in particular, those that are spread throughout the community. The special permit process requires notifying a butters and a legal notice in the newspaper when a property owner is seeking a special permit for a two-family dwelling. This process allows, um, this process is designed to give a butters a say in these projects by providing a forum to raise issues and concerns with the ZBA regarding the specific project being proposed. There are eight special permit findings that the board must make when granting a special permit that include economic and community needs, traffic and safety concern, utility and other public services, impact on the neighborhood character and the natural environment, as well as impact on town services. Uh, finally, I do wanna note that this change would not impact the zoning bylaws' floor area ratio, which is how the town measures the massing of buildings. Just because a two-family house is being built doesn't mean it can be any bigger than a single lot, one-family house. And that is all I have for my presentation. Do you have any questions? Awesome. I should have mentioned I talk fast when I'm nervous, so we just blew through that. Oh, uh, Matt Johnson?
Hi, so uh, my, I guess question or comments uh, have to do, in fact, with that floor area ratio in part, um, that when I look at the long-range plan, uh, you can find that Residence B is about twenty-one hundred acres. Um, but it has nineteen hundred homes. So that means that while the minimum lot size is half an acre, the average lot size of Residence B is over an acre. So that means that the floor area ratio would permit, oh, God, average, over a ten thousand square foot structure. So in other words, the floor area ratio is, you know, at, at the, you know, for a minimum conforming lot would allow two, three thousand square foot units for a total of six thousand. If you look at the experience we have with Residence C, the developers have absolutely maxed out the lot capacity uh, in order to maximize the size of the individual units. And in fact, even, I think as you probably aware, uh, kind of bent the rules in some places with ceiling heights to get even more. Uh, so, you know, my expectation is that while theoretically you could build a, you know, ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot house in Residence B is a single-family home, it's very unlikely. And yet, with the two families, it is more likely that very large units uh, could get built. Um, so, you know, that I just don't know that the point that's made in the presentation about floor area ratio effectively controlling the unit size is, is appropriate. Um, the second is about walkability and about the uh, you know, the smart growth goals of Concord is stated in the long-range plan. And if you look at Residence B and you apply the MBTA criteria of a half mile from a, the village center or from an MBTA site, uh, uh, less than ten percent of Residence B is within that area. So the idea that these are walkable uh, is, I think, a stretch. Um, so, and I also don't think that as this is defined, it really fits with the land use principles that are defined in our long-range plan. So, I mean, that may sound like town meeting debate, but it also is just feedback in the presentation. I think the presentation's making assertions that just aren't true.
Thank you. Um, one major emphasis we got throughout the MBTA communities was in part, both people concerned it went too far and concerned that it didn't go far enough. So we took a look at the zoning overall and determined where opportunities were. And this is an opportunity to create diversity of housing. The idea being that it doesn't require anyone to do anything, but it gives someone the option of potentially building a larger two-family home on something that otherwise might not be, you know, you know, we may not be seeing a, a ten thousand square foot house on a one-acre Residence B, but the possibility of two, four thousand, you know, you know, s- something being built that would provide housing alternatives and options for people moving to town was something we saw as a positive development. I will also note that part of what we've seen is this isn't a mad rush to create a, you know, a flood of new housing. We're talking in three years, it's been six permits. Um, and these are special permits. So these are subject to the eight criteria for the zoning Board of Appeals as well to find that there is um, merit in them and a need. So I thi- I think that's something to consider as well, but thank you for the feedback.
And also, again, following up on assertions in the presentation, diversity of housing. If you look at these units, they'll be at least three thousand square feet each, if you, you know, compared to, let's say, the Residence C, two families that are eighteen hundred square feet that sold for about one point two million. So these units would sell for one point five approximately if they're the minimum size. And so the diversity of housing we're talking about is housing that's above the median in Concord. So is that diverse?
You know, it, it's, it's very speculative of how things will develop over time, but there is the possibility that someone could convert an existing home into a two-family that now they can sell a unit and then stay in town for longer. There's, you know, there's, there's all sorts of speculative things we can say could happen, but I, I don't think we can necessarily within that just assume the absolute worst, that the only thing that will ever be built is five thousand, ten thousand square foot units, that, that's something hopefully positive will come out of incremental change to our, our zoning bylaws. Thank you.
Rich Feely, uh, three forty-seven Lexington Road. Um, I understand the previous comment, but I think there is a place in the spectrum of housing in Concord for this kind of thing. Young people, two professionals, you know, want new construction. Uh, but we know that if the house that is there is torn down, it will be four or five thousand square feet. That's what happens in this town. And therefore, um, yes, these will be bigger. They will, you know, I don't think be five thousand square feet apiece. And so therefore, I think you should make the point that this is not affordable by any means, but it is in the spectrum of housing where new construction in Concord outside of multifamily is totally out of reach uh, for a segment of the population that would like to live here.
Thank you. I'm sorry, um, who's, what do we have? Tanya Galis?
Hi, yes, sixty-two Prescott Road. I was, I was um, wondering if the planning board is envisioning if, if this bylaw passes. Uh, re, we uh, redoing the tree, tree preservation bylaw, for example. Um, which I think is only about sing, for single-family homes right now and PRDs possibly. Um, and also, uh, I was wondering how uh, sewage requirements factor in depending on where, where the property is.
Um, with, oh, sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay.
I, I, I'm done. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I love Zoom. Um, uh, with regard to the tree preservation bylaw, I believe that would apply regardless of what kind of property is being developed. Um, there, there's no changes to that. And with regard to sewer capacity, that would be one of the criteria that the zoning Board of Appeals would look at. Um, so, so um, you, public, I believe public utilities was like number six on the list of, of criteria that they have to find are positively um, that they have to be in favor of. So, so there is a control there with the zoning Board of Appeals. So if there's no capacity, there can't be more development along that front for, for um, sewer, so.
Thank you.
Uh, Eric Moore?
Uh, hi, good evening. Eric Moore, forty-five Francis Street. Um, so I'm not really sure what a two-family house is. Uh, uh, I think, I think that's a, is it in fact a duplex? I mean, a structure, two, two homes with a, with a common wall. And I, I guess, just trying to understand this, this, this proposal. So a few years ago, we passed a bylaw to allow on Residence C areas uh, with special permit uh, to build two-family homes. Um, um, and now, now this is Residence B. Those, those properties by and large are a little further away from, from the town centers. Uh, uh, as Matt Johnson was saying, uh, on average, those are on larger lots. Uh, but I guess the anticipated outcome is that uh, we'll see things like we've seen for, for, for uh, Residence C, these, these different duplexes, except that one could anticipate that they would just be simply larger because they can be larger on the, on the average lot size. Is that? Is that kind of, I mean, this is basically saying to me, it's more of the same that we did with the Residence C, except now in Residence B. And it seems to be working okay, albeit slowly on Residence, on Residence C. Is that the right way to summarize this?
Right, right. It's, yes, that's, it's, it's evolution, not revolution. The idea is that we saw some positive feedback of some housing development. Um, you know, six units, um, when it was done in twenty twenty-ones. The idea is that this would just provide another option for people um, as they look to plan for the future. Thank you. And I think that's our last question, so I'm gonna call it and we'll move on. Thank you. Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Article 36. Rob Almeida is going to talk about floodplain conservancy.
Good evening. I'll be presenting Article 36 at the town meeting, the zoning bylaw amendment to Section 2.3, zoning map, Section 7.2, the floodplain conservancy district. The proposed bylaw amendment consists of an additional requirement of the Code of Federal Regulations, the National Flood Insurance Program, and correction to housekeeping items and grammar and punctuation. So in the simplest terms, here's what we're proposing. So number one is a state model floodplain bylaw updated in 2020. The requirement for all communities in the NFPI to, oh, sorry, NFIP, excuse me, to adopt the bylaw updates. If not adopted, more importantly, Concord property owners will no longer be able to get flood insurance. Correcting grammar and punctuation assists with clarity interpretation of the bylaw for, in the future. So again, you know, punctuation matters here. The state, State's floodplain coordinator spotted one additional requirement from the state's model floodplain bylaw that is required to be included in the town's floodplain conservancy district bylaw, which was largely amended in 2021 to be in compliance with the 2020 bylaw model. Included this requirement allows proper, Concord property owners to continue to get flood insurance. That's pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions? This one was very exciting.
Good job.
Thank you very much, Rob. And next and last, on to Article 37, zoning bylaw, housekeeping amendments. Sue will walk us through that.
Well, now that you had to sit through all that trivial stuff, we could get to something really exciting. Housekeeping corrections. This article addresses spelling errors, unclear phrasing, out-of-date references, and naming conventions. You will notice that there are many, seeing as how this amendment takes up 10 and 1/2 pages in the warrant. Don't worry, I will not go through every amendment in my presentation. Examples of these housekeeping changes include things such as adding a missing comma and changing the word "which" to "that," change from "of." One style to another style of relative clause. Next slide, please. Changing the word "assure" to "ensure" in several places for consistency. Updating the phrase "Board of Selectment" to "Select Board" throughout the zoning bylaw. Changing "that" to "then," a mistyped word. And while we're at it, updating to more modern phrasing rather than archaic language, instead of as conditions thereof, the following, the following conditions, which makes much more sense to modern people. Now, if anyone has specific questions about any of the proposed amendments, it would be my pleasure to clarify the proposed changes, possibly in gory detail. Bring it on.
Mary Hartman, 16 Concord Green, member of the select board, speaking for ourselves. Thank you, Ms. Felch, for having the patience and the tenacity to do these changes. I noticed there mostly are word changes. And I'm sure you're aware, there was a book written a few years ago by a woman named Lynn Truss, I think. And the title was Eat Shoots and Leaves. And the point was that a comma can change the entire meaning of a sentence. So I'm asking, did you look at punctuation, or did you just look at?
Oh, yes. Okay. Oh, yes. And in fact, the, on that first slide, the comma is far more important than the change from "which" to "that."
Good, okay, thank you.
300 questions on Zoom? Nope. I think that's it.
Jeff, thank you so much, and thank everyone for being here. I think that we can take a motion to end the hearing for Articles 34, 35, 36, and 37 from the warrant of the 2024 town meeting.
Move to adjourn. Move to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. And